Call our regular meeting of city council to order for Monday, December 18th, 2017, our last council meeting for 2017, so we'd like to welcome everyone. First order of business this morning, councillor business, new councillor business, 2.1, councillor Wilber.
Thank you. So, yes, it's attached to the agenda, but I would like to move that the Dawson Creek Council supports the application to Northern Development Initiative Trust for the Dawson Creek Golf and Country Club, for the Community Halls and Recreation Facilities Grant for up to $50,000 for the Dawson Creek Golf and Country Club Kart Replacement Project from the Northeast Regional Development Account.
Thank you. Seconded councillor Rogers, discussion. Councillor Wilber?
Just good on them. Councillor Rogers is always telling everybody, you know, "Apply for these grants," and they have, and I hope with our letter that they're successful in their application.
Okay. Councillor Rogers?
And they probably will be because the Lone Wolf Golf and Country Club got money for their carts.
Correct. Good deal. Good stuff. Benefit of NDIT. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Any other new councillor business? Councillor Wilber?
Just on that, with it being passed, I just to staff if we can get that out to NDIT later today, just with the application.
It'll go. Thank you. Any other new councillor business? Anyone? 3-1, we have the minutes of our regular meeting of council of December 4th for adoption. Councillor Schuman, councillor McFadden. Any errors or omissions in the minute? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Is there any business arising out of the minute? Correspondents, 5-1, we have a letter from Caitlin Trebel, artistic director for the Dawson Creek Choral Society, for a letter of resolution for support of NDIT marketing initiative grant. Councillor Parslow? Move? Seconded councillor Jevetkov, discussion?
You'll bring this up in mayors? Or do you vote on it now?
No, it's under correspondent, so we can vote on it now.
Okay. Well, I'd support it.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. 5-2, we have a letter from Joseline Isert, event manager at the Northeast Aboriginal Business Center regarding a request for a sponsorship of their Aboriginal Wellness Conference in April 2018. I don't thi-- Duncan, Brenda, have we supported this in the past? Have we been a sponsor of the wellness?
Through your worship, it-- there was a request back in 2012, and it was received for information at that time.
Okay.
That's the last we've heard.
Thank you. Council. Councillor Rogers?
Yeah, I looked at the attachment to it for all of the sponsors, and I didn't see any municipal governments contributing to it.
I thought City of Fort Joan and Chatwin were on it.
Yeah.
Last year, or was that?
Oh, sorry, City of Fort Joan.
And District of Chatwin, I think, were. Anyway. Council's discussion. Councillor Jevetkov?
Received for information.
Received for information. Seconded. Councillor Rogers, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. 5-3, we have a letter from Chris Civic, CAO from the Peaceville Regional District, regarding a regional initiatives requiring municipal participation. Councillor Parslow?
So, move that we endorse that?
Thank you. Seconded councillor Schuman, discussion?
There are many things that we interact with, so staff, this is all on our agenda, so I see nothing wrong with granting that request.
Yeah, and, go ahead Duncan.
So, through your worship, the only note I would make, there's no time commitment or cost to any of these, so just confirmation that we'll work within them and where they fit, and there's a benefit to our taxpayers, we'll focus on those projects.
And the discussion at the RD Board table was about ensuring that the RD, when they are interacting with municipalities, that the council are aware of it, so that it raises up that awareness, that administration are working on initiatives within the RD and the municipality. And our Rural Fire Protection Agreement is one of those, so it's, I think for most of us, we're aware of it, but it's just good information. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. 5-4, we have a letter, email from Julia Payne, deputy corporate officer from the District of Sicamoose regarding a request for a letter of support for the prevention of quagga and zebra mussels. Councillor Schuman?
I would move that we provide a letter.
Thank you. Seconded councillor Rogers, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. 5-5, we have a letter from Jeff Lexstrom, head coach of the Dawson Creek Peace Country Toyota Hockey Team regarding a request for a donation. Duncan, can you give us just a little bit of a cost on this?
So, through your worship, youth passes are $5 for a single admission in 2018.
Thank you. Councillor Parslow?
So, move the grant request?
Seconded. Councillor Schuman, discussion?
So, cost of? Hundred, $500?
$500? And it'll come through sponsorship grants?
Yes.
Correct. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. You folks have someplace to get today. We're a little ahead of delegation, so I'm going to move to reports, and I don't want to do report number 7-1 yet, because we have, Wendy will be here as part of our delegation, so we'll go to 7-2, and this is report 17-187 from the Recreation Manager regarding our ice allocation policy. Councillor Schuman?
Move report number 17-187 from the Recreation Manager regarding the ice allocation policy update. Spring and summer ice extensions be received for the amendments proposed in the policy attached to this report be approved pending the required 30-day review.
Thank you. Seconded councillor McFadden, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Report 7-3, sorry, report 17-188 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the appointments for our Northeast Regional Advisory Committee, which is NDIT. Councillor Parslow?
The report 17-188 from the Director of Corporate Administration, reappointments to the Northeast Regional Advisory Committee be received. Further, the councillor Mark Rogers be appointed as the City of Dawson Creek representative, and Mayor Dale Bump said be appointed as the alternate.
Thank you. Seconded councillor Schu-- Wilber, discussion? I'm going to do it. We should have said that at the outset. We've had a, I had to move some folks around today because, just in the spirit of trying to keep peace in the family, so we've moved councillors Parslow and Wilber. That's not true.
I just showed up.
They just showed up and they moved. So, it'll throw everybody off, and me especially, because I have Wilber and Schuman sitting together, and that's always an opportunity.
It was long overdue. Long overdue.
And so councillor Rogers, who's appointed to this, I think is the absolute correct appointment for council to make. I think he's done a great job representing our community at NDIT and opening up that for the community and region in a very good way. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. 7-4, we have report number 17-190 from the Energy Manager regarding the City of Dawson Creek Solar Site Assessment Summary. Now, this was a direction we had asked for earlier in the year for this report. Councillor Schuman?
I move report 17-190 from the Energy Manager regarding the City of Dawson Creek Solar Site Assessment Summary be received and is approved as presented.
Thank you. Seconded councillor Jevetkov, discussion? Councillor Parslow?
I'm glad the work's been done. It does show the potential. It also shows the cost. So, we are ready, and I know that staff will be vigilant, as well as the Peace Energy Co-op about opportunities, so I hope we can act on this sometime.
Yeah, I agree. I think it was really good information in the report. I really enjoyed seeing the analysis of facilities and cost breakdown and long-term benefits, and so hopefully as we do our five-year, 10-year capital programs, that we can start to consider those as a part of the long-term benefits of the implementation of this renewable opportunity to our buildings and facilities and city and long-term payback as well. So, it was really good information. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Report number 17-192 from the Development Services Manager regarding 106th Avenue, 6th Street to 108th Avenue Road Reconstruction Estimate. So, before I go, councillor Rogers, is this?
Is this me?
So, maybe if we can, because there's a, councillor Rogers is a property owner along the area, so we're going to just have him removed from the building. Always wanted to do that as a conflict, and so maybe have the RCMP come in. I shouldn't say that. So, now we have the report in front of us. Councillor Parslow?
The report 17-192 from the Development Services Manager of the 106th Avenue dash 6th Street dash 108th Avenue Road Reconstruction Estimate be received for information.
Thank you. Seconded councillor McFadden, discussion? Go ahead.
I remember raising this matter at council concerning the flooding, the terrible conditions for people approaching the Brookside Cemetery, and I imagine so this will be brought forward for consideration in our budget deliberations. That's my suggestion.
Yeah. Yeah, capital will now be part of that prioritization for 2018, and for the folks who are watching, this is the area down around in front of Brookside Cemetery that really got broken down last year, and so council had asked administration to bring it forward for some consideration, and now it'll get into our priority discussions for capital in 2018. Duncan?
So, through your worship, the alternative actually to this recommendation is that it could be considered as part of the 2018 budget. So, if council would like to move this to the first budget meeting, we should maybe amend that.
Okay, and so I'd assume that's what we would be doing with it, but if we provide that direction, then we'll just ask for minor amendment to the motion. Councillor McFadden, and seconded councillor Schuman, that we bring it forward into the budget, capital budget discussions in January. Councillor Schuman?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, I know that not everybody has this in front of them, but over a million dollars for this upgrade.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
Yeah, roadwork and reconstruction work and all of that, and so this one really is, will be part of that deliberation. Thank you. Councillor Jevetkov?
I just wanted to mention that in addition to being access to the cemetery, it's also an important part of our industrial area in the city.
Yeah, it provides that real east-west link in that area over there, and so it's an important, as you say, an important bit of our road network infrastructure. It really got beat up last year bad with the weather and traffic, and so that's why it's here, and we'll get it into our budget deliberation. Thank you. Any further comments? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. If we can have councillor Rogers back in, if he hasn't left the building?
Excuse me, through your worship?
Oh, sorry, on the amendment. Sorry, we should have done that. So, on the amendment, we voted, so on the main motion, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you, Brenda.
She's paying attention.
Boy, she's paying attention today.
We didn't throw her off at all.
Thank you, councillor Rogers.
Thank you for reminding me.
7-6, we have our report number 17-193 from the Airport Manager regarding an RFP for the Airport Restaurant. Councillor McFadden?
I'll move the report number 17-193 from the Airport General Manager regarding request for proposal 2017-44 Airport Restaurant be received. Further, the council award RFP 2017-44 Airport Restaurant to Old Graham's Kitchen for a three-year term for a price of $400 a month.
Thank you. Seconded councillor Schuman, discussion? Councillor Rogers?
I just have a question. So, it's $400 a month, but that's including the electricity, the gas, and does it include the insurance on the place as well?
Duncan?
So, through your worship, our Leesies are required to have their own liability insurance and their own contents insurance, but we hold the overall insurance on that facility, correct, Brenda?
But it would include the operating costs of heat, gas, light, and all that stuff?
Correct.
Any further discussion? Critical part of the airport, we've got to find a way to keep that restaurant and provide that service to travelers as we continue to build the air service into the community and the addition of the Integra Air Flight and Central Mountain Air Flight, so, thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Councillor Rogers, opposed? Can we record that?
It's just too cheap.
Too reasonable. 7-7, we have report number 17-194 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding council remuneration policy. This is brought back from our previous meeting. Councillor Schuman, moves? Go ahead.
Report 17-194 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the policy update. Council remuneration be received for the policy attached to this report be approved pending the required 30-day review.
Thank you. Seconded councillor McFadden, discussion? Councillor Jevetkov?
I'll be voting against the motion because it just adds to the operational costs, and we've already got enough issues with our finances.
Thank you. Second, or sorry, any other comments, questions? For me, there's two or three components that I talked about at the last session that are important, I think, for us as we set policy and remuneration policy. Remuneration policy is one of those difficult ones for any council because you're setting your own remuneration, but I don't look at it from that perspective. I look at it that we're setting the remuneration policy for future councils as well, and that policy is what engages and allows people who wish to serve their community and have the ability to do so without it costing them, in some cases, to be able to come and serve. And I think it's, we need to do all we can to broaden the demographics of who can and will sit on council, and I think that goes both for the policy of council remuneration for council members, as well as the mayor, and it does exactly that. And in 2018, the federal government, all of us who serve municipal government, have one-third of whatever we receive was as a tax-free, we weren't taxed on that one-third component of what we received. So, for council, we received $15,000 or $16,000 or $17,000 a year to serve, one-third of that was tax-free, which made it a little more easy to accept. In 2018, the federal government have changed those tax rules and tax laws, and so that one-third is going to be gone, so now it adds to the tax burden for people, and so this policy helps to remove some of those components that were built in the previous remuneration policy, and it hasn't been addressed for our city for 10 years, and so we engaged a local group of community folks, business people and residents, through our service organizations and the Chamber of Commerce to meet and deliberate on this remuneration policy, and I think we've really done the diligence around that and am fully supportive of addressing it. Councillor Parslow?
Yeah, I wasn't able to be at that meeting. Was the question of how, how is council going to be dealing with all the incidental expenses associated with being a councillor, which that one-third was supposed to address? You know, the, so that one-third is approximately $6,000 to cover a whole bunch of incidental expenses, so how is council, was there any discussion at that meeting, I didn't see it in the minutes, about how those incidental expenses are going to be handled?
Duncan?
And if not, should that be reflected in the policy?
Duncan?
So, my understanding, and I would have to go back if this is a concern and council would like some more information, but my understanding is that the new legislation, once it takes place, allows council to claim out-of-pocket expenses still with proof. However, because most councils receive per diem and also a remuneration, they don't anticipate that there'll be a lot of out-of-pocket, but I can do some more research on that if that, if council needs that.
Yeah, I think one of the things that certainly, as the mayor, you get to invited to a lot of stuff and outside of council, as do councillors, and I'm not sure if councillor Parslow is about this one, but every time you go, you're either writing a check or putting some money into the organizations, and not, you know what, that's part of the, part of what we do, right? That's part of what we do, and go to events and support them, but because we're in the public eye, we get invited to a lot of stuff, and so, and I don't know if that's what you're talking about or not, councillor Parslow, but the committee who they met on with this stuff didn't see any additional reason to add those other components into it, as other communities do.
Well, just being slightly facetious, I see my, one of my colleagues, Stu Flynn, in the audience here. I mean, I've been buying all the coffee for the last six years, thinking it was a councillor expense, so he would now be able to share in that coffee expense.
Maybe.
Maybe, yeah.
So, anyway, it's a, we have now a 30-day review policy for anybody that has some input into it, and perfectly happy to see people provide that input into why and what we do. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried, and councillor Jevetkov, opposed? Thank you. 7.8, we have report number 17-196 from the General Manager of Development Services regarding our water and sewer rate history report. Councillor Wilber?
Sure, I'll move that report number 17-196 from the General Manager of Development Services regarding history of water and sewer rates be received, and further that council direct staff to review water and sewer rates prior to 2019.
Thank you. Seconded councillor Schuman. Councillor Rogers, or sorry, did you have a discussion or are you seconding?
I'll second it, but if I can talk about it.
Yep, go ahead.
As far as we are already.
Yep.
I read in the attachments that it was actually supposed to be increased in 2017. It was a recommendation from one of the attachments. I just, and there was rationale regarding the increase previous to all of that. I'll just go back to my notes. So, 2000, I think it was 2014 that there was an increase or something like that, but it was, it was originally increased to pay for the recommended $800,000 a year that was supposed to be invested into city sewer infrastructure, and I just, and it was also to help fund the sewer trunk line as well. And my only question would be, have we been following that report through those recommendations that we do spend $800,000 a year on sewer infrastructure?
Administration, please. Duncan?
So, through your worship, the first piece, and I don't know if we included it in the report, but in Shelley's five-year plan, it had actually indicated in 2019, we should be looking at our sewer rates and our water rates as, as it is a self-funded service, we're getting to that point where we needed to take a second look or a closer review. As far as the reports, I'll ask Kevin if he can answer that, as far as our commitment to the report.
Yeah, so, through your worship, so as far as the sewer master plan and the work within that, annually, we've been allocating some funds, some projects bigger than others, like the sewer trunk line, which is a very large one, and that's what drove those rate changes, and then we've done some subsequent work. It's not exactly $800,000, but it's, I believe, every year we're doing some more commentary services.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was just a report, I found my note on that, it was report 1431, but it was $880,000 over the next 10 years, but I guess that would have been that report from Urban Systems on those recommendations. Okay, I'm just curious to find out if we had been investing what the reports were telling us to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Councillor Jevetkov?
So, the study that you've got outlined here, does it include the water rates that we're charging for rural and PUS?
So, through your worship, the, in the water rate structure review, we established the rural water rates at that point in time, and that's when it went from up to $2.90 a cube, because it's in a, they compared it to the average residential use in town and the infrastructure charges, and basically you get an effective rate of $202.90 a cube. So, essentially, it's meant to balance out so that the rural people pay effectively the same rate as the residents in the city.
So, that would include the infrastructure charges that the city is paying?
Yeah. It balances out, so they essentially pay the same.
You know, was it when we had this conversation a month or so ago, I took my water utility bill and took the usage just for one month and calculated out with the rate of our, my rate, the residential rate in the city plus the infrastructure charge, and then took that $2.93 rate and applied it to the usage we had, and it was within pennies of each other, dollars of $92 to $95 bucks, I think with rural rate for their rate and ours with infrastructure, so it's almost bang on. It was interesting. The one thing that I found was really interesting in the Urban Systems Report was, and I guess that's why I'm really interested in seeing this review take place, because I think it says a review of the rates, how the rates are structured for various customers is recommended as an next step, and I think that's a real good bit of work for us to undertake, is that analysis of the rates and how they're impacted. The other thing, I think, that's the new phenomenon for us today that didn't exist even two or three years ago, was the reclaimed water usage, and how now the demand and use of that is starting to climb, which is going to be a real nice revenue stream, if I can use that literally, for us, and, and so that's going to add to that revenue for the community and building, hopefully, the capital requirements for our sewer master plan, the drainage master plan, all of that stuff, and calculating the impact of that is a real, a real good future potential for us. And I, like I say, I don't think we've ever been able to consider that as any significance in terms of revenue into our sewer water and sewer utilities, so, thank you. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor? Sorry, Mark, did you have a question?
The only other comment that I would have is from that Urban Systems Report, I thought was really excellent, actually. Like, there's over 125 kilometers, this is back in 2009, 125 kilometers of water infrastructure, of piping, et cetera, but this, but the inventory value was $77 million for the water treatment plant and our piping system, but we've invested tens of millions of dollars since then in that, and, you know, as we do grow and as systems get more complicated, yeah, the rates will end up inevitably having to go up. They have to go up in order to us to maintain that and, and keep the water quality that we have.
One thing you need, any community, is water and water and sewer, and that's core, right, in terms of what you do, so. People have to turn that tap on, knowing they've got security in terms of having water availability, quality and supplies. Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. So, we're close enough to nine o'clock, I'd like to move now to, back to our delegations, and our delegations, obviously, this morning are, it's so good to see our chairs filled and council this morning as a result of the City of Dawson Creek 2018 Community Awards, and these awards were brought forward, and the nomination process went on earlier this summer and fall, and, and really, really great support from the local community in terms of sponsoring the awards, and so it's so, it's so good to see the community demonstrate this pride in itself and recognizing people and businesses and community volunteers that show how good our community can be as it relates to the people and the quality of life. So, there's four awards that we have for 2000, this Community Awards, the Youth of the Year, the Business of the Year, the Entrepreneur of the Year, and the Citizen of the Year. And the Youth of the Year, there were four nominees, and I think I have the four nominees were Jayden Ford, Braxton Goldade, Jayden Mayo, and Leila Hingley, and so, and it was sponsored by, who's our, Sue Kenny? No, you guys do, who did youth?
Co-op.
Co-op. So, have we got co-op here?
Yeah.
Ah, there he is. So, we're going to do the nominee, the winner of our 2018 Youth of the Year, we have Mr. Rod Hillary, the distinguished Mr. Rod Hillary, General Manager of the Co-op. Good morning. Welcome. Thank you for-- Good morning, welcome. Thank you for, thank you for helping us with this, sponsoring this award. And so, the 2018 Youth of the Year, and there it is, is Jayden Mayo.
Yay!
And let me give you Jayden's, come on up, come on up, and let me give you Jayden's congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations. You get the hug from the mayor.
Thank you.
So, Jayden is the Vice President of the Rotary Interact Club, traveled to Belize last year to participate in a playground build with a group of the Rotary Act students, volunteers for the Dawson Creek Child and Youth Mental Health and Substance Abuse Local Action Team, and she puts her heart and soul into everything she does, whether it's in her community or around the world, and so we're so proud of having, obviously, these young people that represent our community and step up at such a young age and do such a great job for our community and those around us, and so, completely deserving, and it's our pleasure to provide and present you with the Youth of the Year.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Merry Christmas. Sorry, Entrepreneur of the Year is our Community Future, Sue Kenny, and so if Sue wants to come up, we'll, the nominees for Entrepreneur of the Year were Jessica Holland, Claudette Huber, and Cynthia LaValle. Good morning, good morning, good morning, good morning, come on up. And the entrepreneur of, for this year, is Jessica Holland. Congratulations, congratulations. You get the merry hug. Good job. So, Jessica, 23 years old, started a fitness club, MMA club, in Dawson Creek three years ago. She's been a great role model for other young girls and women, provides a safe and healthy environment for them to become strong and independent, first sanctioned women's MMA fighter in our region. Jim has become certified with the B.C. and National Boxing Association, and is the only gym certified in Dawson Creek. So, great job. It's so good to have young entrepreneurs, young business people in our community, building the community. Congratulations. Sue, thank you so much, obviously, Community Futures, for supporting the community as always, and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Business of the Year is sponsored by our Dawson Creek and District Chamber of Commerce. Juan is here. And the Businesses of the Year this year that were nominated were SNL Enterprises, Uniglobe, Peace Energy Co-op, and the Dawson Creek Co-op. And the winner is, I thought it was here. Dawson Creek Co-op. And the General Manager is here. So, obviously, the Co-op, and I don't know, 100 years, pretty quick, we're celebrating. So, obviously, the Co-op goes without saying, that outstanding commitment to our community as always. Locally owned and operated by its members, donates close to $100,000 a year, each year, from the Wow Kid, to scholarships, to athletic sponsorship, to service groups and community organizations. I think, obviously, it, any of us who have been here for our long, long time, I was going to say our lifetime, you look at the transformation that's occurred at the Co-op in the last years, the renovation and the new franchises, the chopped leaf and Booster Juice, and it's just breathed a new life, to me, into that organization, and it's a huge credit to the Co-op. Provide great paying jobs within our community, and full benefit and pension plans for those employees, look after their employees by covering medical costs, offering student retention bonuses, and it's been in Dawson Creek for over 96 years, and obviously, to me, having watched the difficult times the Co-op went through not so very long ago, and to where it is today, I think is absolute great accomplishment and terrific honor, and really appreciate the Co-op and Rod building our community. Thank you. And the final 2018 Dawson Creek Community Award is the Citizen of the Year. And the, it was so good to see the nominees, the number of nominees for each category this year that showed the interest and the pride in our community of people nominating folks, and we had seven people nominated for Citizen of the Year, Cynthia LaValle, Jacqueline Johnson, Stu and Mark Flynn, their count has one.
They come as a package deal.
They come as a package deal. Crystal Robar, Dale Bumstead, Candace Zrmiak, and Meredith Thornton. And it was obviously humbling to be included, and we'll have some discussion about that in terms of, anyway. The Citizen of the Year this year for 2018, and my congratulations to Jacqueline Johnson. And I'm sorry, and it's sponsored by the City of Dawson Creek, so I thought I forgot to bring somebody up with me. Good morning. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. So, obviously, Jacqueline created Network Ministries, she knew that need existed in our community, and has been an amazing, amazing volunteer for building this huge need for, within the community, and wears that heart on her sleeve. She's created community within that community that helps those in need, volunteers hundreds of hours per month to serve in need, and does it with a thankful heart, and I know when she first was kicking this off, and I went down and you saw the store that was there for clothing, and household articles, and furniture, and food, and on, and on, and on, and I was amazed at how that was filled from within that facility for our community in virtually no time, and it demonstrated, I think, the care that Jacqueline and her team that had the support around her, and the community supporting it as well, and so, anyway, it's absolutely my pleasure to present Jacqueline with the Award of the Citizen of the Year for 2018 for the City of Dawson Creek. Congratulations. Thank you. And thank you to everybody for sponsoring, for supporting, for nominating, and for people stepping up and voting for, and supporting these awards. It's, to me, it was a gap that existed in our community of not showing the pride that we have and demonstrating that in our community, so I really appreciate people taking the time to nominate, support, and vote for these really worthy individuals, and congratulations to all the folks who have, were the winners of the awards this year, and thank you all for coming this morning, and Merry Christmas to everyone. So, we're going to take a five-minute break if we can, just to allow folks to get out, and council can have a quick five-minute, seven-minute break. Our next delegation, our 6.2, we have Wendy Davies from Branch Manager for the BCS PCA and Kira Tack, Animal Services Officer, we're in attendance, and good morning, welcome. Nice to have you guys here. Chair is yours, the floor is yours.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Yes, nice to see everyone right before Christmas. All right, nicely organized stuff up. So, we're here this morning in regard to our contract, the Animal Services Contract with the City of Dawson Creek. We have requested an increase in our contract, we're looking at a five-year term, which we know is a long time, and under current care levels or staffing levels right now, we're just simply unable to keep up with the level of work. I mean, this has been a challenge ongoing as long as I've been with the society in my nine years. I've seen 12 people attempt to cover the animal services position. Kira has been with us for a year, and I'm praying that we can keep her long-term, because she's doing an absolutely amazing job. The challenges that we've seen come in, I mean, like I said, we've had higher turnover, so it's always been a challenge, but in the last three years, I mean, we introduced a Gold Star Quality Bylaw in 2015, which we have seen just endless success with, which I'll go over with you. This has also resulted in a dramatic increase in the number of calls coming into the society for the City of Dawson Creek. The standard number of animals coming in is staying the same or reducing a little bit, but most of the work we do for the city doesn't involve animals coming into the shelter. Most of the work we do for the city involves us being out there dealing with barking dog calls, animals at large, issues between neighbors, licensing, and obviously, the vicious dog calls are the big concern. Those take up an endless amount of time when they come in. We've seen our calls increase from 261 in 2015 to 482 at the end of October this year, and having just one person allocated to that position, it is absolutely impossible for that person to keep up with the amount of work there. So, these numbers, 281 to 482, those are the amount of calls actually recorded that she has time to put into the system, so I can guarantee you that the amount, the number of calls is actually higher than that. We also were left with only having one person in this position, when there's things like, there's no coverage for things like sick days, vacations, and heaven forbid, a vacancy in the position. And what I can tell you is I feel that in the past, that we've, there's been almost an expectation that I would be able to cover animal control if there's a vacancy, and I can tell you that it was very clear in 2016, when we had a vicious dog incident and we lost our animal services to stress leave, that I was absolutely overwhelmed. My, I work for a not-for-profit society, they already asked me to do the work of two people on the wage of, like, or on 35 hours a week. They, I've recently had to allocate some of my work to another staff member, because I simply cannot keep up with the work in the shelter alone, so when animal services is vacant and there is, you know, a more than full-time position also put on my plate, it is absolutely impossible for me to cover. We don't have enough hours in the shelter alone, we rely heavily on volunteers in the shelter just to take care of the animals, so I, there's not hours or FTE available in the shelter for me to pull that out and cover animal control if animal control is not available. So, you know, just to clarify that. So, we need to make sure that in order to provide this Gold Star Bylaw coverage, we are requesting an increase to allow for another 0.6 FTE, a part-time person to be available to help support animal control and allow us to attend all of the calls that come in. It's also a concern for health and safety. We manage a lot of, not a lot, but when vicious dog calls come in, I think it's a health and safety concern to not have a support person for animal services, and aggressive, we are, in our line of work, do come across quite hostile people as well. People can be very emotional about their animals, and I think it's very important that we have a person available to support animal services when we have to deal with these situations. And then, as I indicated, in 2016, when we do have a large vicious dog call come in, those calls take up almost all of animal services time. So, when we have everything else come in on top of the vicious dog call, we need a support person to make sure that that's, that that's going to work. So, I'm hoping that you guys will be able to allow for us to get the other part-time person in. The money we're requesting is 100% going to go towards this service, because as it stands right now with the level of FTE we have right now, we can't even maintain the service as it is. We would have to reduce service by just keeping one person in this position. We need a 1.6 FTE in this position just in order to maintain the service as what it is right now. I, I'm sorry, I'm just going over my notes here. So, part of the, part of the things that we've seen that have come into care in the society itself, so one of, some of the questions that come up is the amount of care that's required aside from animal services. We keep animal services as a separate entity from shelter operations. In the last four years, the BCSPCA introduced the standards of care for shelter animals, the Canadian standards of care for shelter animals into our facility. This is a 75-page document that very clearly outlines everything we need to do. This has been rolled out into BCSPCA shelters. It's absolutely fantastic. It allows us to give the best care to these animals coming into care as per our current, the best knowledge out there available right now. This, of course, is a benefit to the city, it reduces any risk. You know, we provide care that reduces or prevents disease outbreaks, manages behavior issues, those type of things in the shelter, so, you know, you're not going to have to worry about anybody being concerned about animals that maybe came into our care through the bylaw. We take very, very good care of those animals. We also operate under what's scientific calculation created by Dr. Kate Hurley out of UC Davis called Capacity for Care. This is a calculation that looked at the care of animals versus, and applied some marketing science behind it, allowing us to increase live release, live release rates in the shelter and increase adoptions. So, we've seen a significant amount of care and, sorry, animals leaving with good outcomes out of the building. We, the Capacity for Care model keeps less animals in the building, but moves them through much more quickly. So, back in 2015, we would see cats sit in the shelter 200 to 300 days. Now, they sit in the shelter three weeks, and we work with a partnership through Central Mountain Air to fly cats to Vancouver every week. So, it is a constant cooperative work through the BCSPCA to support the City of Dawson Creek. And of course, the cat bylaws that came into place at that time did bring a few more cats into care, as we expected, so we had that backup plan in place. But, I mean, if we're going to look at successes, thanks to the cat bylaws and the bylaw changes we made in 2015, we saw, we saw cats, sorry, we have seen a significant, so we've seen record-breaking changes in the last three years, from 2000 to 2017. In 2017, we have broken several records at the shelter already. We have had seen the lowest number of incoming kittens ever come in from the City of Dawson Creek. In 2015, we saw 73% of our kittens that came into care were from the City of Dawson Creek. In 2017, 26% are coming from the City of Dawson Creek. Thanks to you all making the decision to put in those bylaws, we saw a grant, a private grant issued in 2016 that allowed us to fix 160 cats in the City of Dawson Creek. Of course, that goes a long way to reducing kittens coming in. And in 2017, Petsmart Charities of Canada recognized the City of Dawson Creek's efforts to control cat overpopulation, and issued a grant for $75,000 to fix cats in the city. At the end of the year, we'll be, well, I guesstimate that we'll fix around 350 cats. We have enough money to fix 650 cats, and right now, we're working with Petsmart Charities to extend the program into 2017 to allow us to fix the rest of those cats. Obviously, that's going to continue to help our situation of cat overpopulation in the city. We have seen record redemption rates of cats, so just as I expected with cat licensing, we have seen record cat licensing this year. We had seen cat licensing, sorry, of 240 cats were licensed in 2015. At the end of October, we had 707 cats licensed in the City of Dawson Creek. Now, redemption rates, return to owner rates, go hand-in-hand with licensing, because it allows us to know where animals live. In 2015, we were getting 13% of the cats back to owner, and we're sitting at 43% of the cats being returned to owner on average in 2017. So, I expect to see that number continue with licensing. We've also seen a record number of animals fixed in the City of Dawson Creek this year with bulls vets. The one vet usually sees between 200 and 300 animals fixed this, each year. They're sitting at about 500 animals fixed through their facility this year, and the other vet usually sees between 400 and 500 per year, and they're sitting around 800 cats fixed this year, or cats, animals fixed this year. 800 cats fixed this year, or cats, animals fixed this year. So, you know, absolutely amazing records happening here in the city. Our bylaws, in my opinion, if they're not the best in British Columbia, they're near the best in the country in the way they're written and the way they're enforced. I've had inquiries from Kamloops, Prince George, Fort St. John, and even Abbotsford asking us about what we're doing here. Anytime I talk about our bylaws, I have people asking me what we're doing, how they can get on board and make it work for them too. So, you know, these, these efforts and the ask for increased funding for the next five years is, is 100% going to, to what is needed here for the city to continue this fabulous service that we provide? And then, of course, we'll be rolling out the new facility. We are ready to go. We're just waiting for spring because we all know it's really expensive to build in the winter up here. So in the spring, we'll be launching our new facility, and we will hope for the next five years to continue, you know, an amazing service for the city of Dawson Creek.
Thank you, Wendy.
You're welcome.
Questions?
Counselor Rogers?
Okay. Hello.
Hey.
And I believe you said in 2016, there was, or 15, there was 261 complaints.
281.
And now in 2017, at the end of October, we're at 482 complaints.
Yes.
So what is it you think that spurred it to jump almost double?
I think it's, I think it's the service we're providing. I think, one, we can respond to people with cat issues. So we are able to go and do that. So that's going to, obviously, increase the number of calls coming in. I think that we're much more present in the community and that people feel that they can call, that there is something that can be done to help now. So I think that they're just relying on a service that is increased and improved to the point that they feel it's, it's worth calling.
Okay, because there was, I remember we were going through the cat bylaws and the bees and everything else. I, I believe it was, you know, it would be cost neutral.
Yeah.
But it seems like it's going to end up costing. Now, I just want to talk about dogs for a second.
Sure.
Because there is a lot of conversation about if you had a four-plex, you were allowed four dogs in that unit? Is that, is that the way that worked out? Because I'm just thinking, if there's a four-plex, maybe you should, you should start limiting, thinking about limiting the amount of dogs that are in a building.
Yes, yes.
Like, if it's a, if it's a suite, a duplex, that's four units, you know, is it, is it good to have four dogs there or just one? Because I don't know, have you experienced problems with that?
Yeah, so I, have we had complaints related to that? I, I haven't received a complaint that would be, that that has been an issue. And I did believe, we changed the bylaw in 2015 to, to read that people, there isn't a limit on the amount of animals in a unit as long as the people are abiding by the bylaws. So if we have a person who is, you know, their animals are licensed, they pick up their feces, they're not letting their animals run at large, they're not a problem, there's no barking concerns, we're not, we're not bothering those people. You know, and if there is a person who is causing a challenge for bylaw, that, then the city has the right to limit the amount of animals in their care.
I just think that if there was less animals, there should theoretically be less complaints.
Well, I mean, I think people are going to have pets whether we regulate it or not, right? So what was happening before is people were hiding the pets instead of just being honest with us about who, who they had in care. They would pretend the pet belonged to this person or this person. You know, it was a, a less honest system, I believe, the way it was done before.
Sometimes not the number of animals, but the responsible owners.
Responsible owners.
Yeah.
So how do you force the owners?
Well, that's a slight, that is a high.
Thank you. Any, Counselor Parslow?
Yeah. Hi, Wendy.
Hi.
So just looking at this service fee cost structure.
Yes.
I did ask our CIO about this, but I'm still confused, so don't mind me asking again.
Hopefully, I can help you.
Yeah. So this proposed expense for, well, you've given the expenses for 2017.
Yeah.
Now, does this expense include expenses associated with your work with, for rural areas, outlying communities?
Yes, the entire, the total expense does. That's why we've broken it down to 59% of that expense.
So what I'm looking at for the total of 203,391 is 59% of your total expense?
Uh, I'm sorry, I, this is my area expertise.
I'm looking at your chart here, expenses in 2017.
Okay. Are you looking at the budget?
Yeah, oh, it does. I do, I just answered my question there because you have in parentheses, salaries including benefits, 59% of salary in ALI. So you have, this is just that portion that represents the ratio between city of Dawson Creek calls and outlying area calls.
Yes.
Yeah. So I've answered that question. So I have a supplementary question there. Do you charge in, is there any fee structure at all for service or is it just donations?
For service.
Supposing I, I call you, I've lost my dog, and somebody turns it in, you look after it for a few days, I go and pick it up, do I have to, do I pay you anything?
Are we talking for animals from the rural areas or?
Yes, I'm a rural resident.
Yeah, yeah. The BCSPCA has a free, a fee structure for impound of animals from out of town as well. So we do charge, if a person is, we charge $15 a day board, the same as we do for the city of Dawson Creek, if animals are left at the building. If they come in with identification, a person can pick up right away, it's a $35 fee. If they come in without identification, we're unable to contact, they do have a $90 fee. So we do keep a pretty uniform fee structure as per even the city of Dawson Creek animals. Because, I mean, we would like to encourage people from rural areas to have identification on their animals too. And, and then, of course, if the animal is vaccinated in our care, the BCSPCA has a $50 fee for that. So that is applied for rural animals as well.
So how much of your struggle is related to the fact that PUS2P and Regional District pay you zero?
A great deal of our struggle, for sure, outside and, you know, the city of Dawson Creek. I tell every person who will listen to me that the city of Dawson Creek is amazing and is, is the only municipality currently supporting the BCSPCA. We are, right now, in negotiations with Puscoopy. Puscoopy actually approached me and asked me to come and talk to them about how they can support the BCSPCA. I think everybody here knows that I have a strong platform that animal problems shouldn't be dumped on a not-for-profit society and shouldn't be left for us to, to contribute to that. So I'm excited to see PUS asking to, to be part of the solution. Puscoopy has also supplied some funding towards Bay Neutered Cats in their region. So Puscoopy is interested in coming on board. We haven't finalized an agreement with them right now, so, you know, and if we do finalize an agreement with Puscoopy, it will be simply for the incoming animals. That is not to provide animal control, those type of services, that is a city service. The other regions that come in, the service we provide them is just the care of the incoming animals. I do have plans to approach the Regional District and ask them for funding as well. They currently fund North Peace BCSPCA, so I do not know why we don't receive funding from them as well. And they are certainly the next largest source of incoming animals into the building. So Peace River Regional District is my focus after we're finalized the agreement with Puscoopy.
Does Tumbler Ridge receive any service? Does Tumbler Ridge have residents?
Tumbler Ridge does bring in animals, but it's quite low.
Okay.
Coming in from Tumbler Ridge, 13 animals came in in 2017 from Tumbler Ridge. So, but, in the past, Tumbler Ridge was, was contributing some funding towards the facility, and there was a council change or something happened there that that was, that had fallen off. But it is certainly something I'd like to talk to Chatwin. I have actually tried to speak with Chatwin a couple of times, but haven't gotten anywhere with that. So I'm hoping with PUS coming on board, we can talk to the Regional District, and hopefully we can see that change. With the new facility opening, I, I expect more people will be a much larger present in the region, and I think that we will need more support. I've always thought that, I think everyone here knows that. But it's, it's a matter of if someone has a cloning machine to help me get the time to go out there and, and make that happen.
Thanks, Wendy. Any other questions? Thank you, guys, for coming in this morning and giving us an update, as always, and appreciate the time, and we'll be dealing with the request next on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, one more thing, this is for Counselor Parslow. We've had 15 chicken huts, or chicken houses set up in Dawson Creek.
Wonderful. We will have urban agriculture soon.
Yes, and we've only had three stray chickens.
I hope they still got their heads.
Thank you very much. They do, they do, they have their families.
Thank you, Wendy. Kira?
Thank you, Wendy.
So now we go to 7.1. Report number 17-180 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the South Peace Animal Responsibility Agreement. Counselor Rogers?
That, I'll move that report number 17-180 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding animal responsibility agreement. And I'm going to read the alternative. Council may choose to direct staff to work with the South Peace SPCA to reduce current service levels within the agreement to fit within the city's current funding allocation of $140,000.
Have a second there. Counselor Parslow, discussion?
The reason I, I moved this forward because I think that there needs to be some negotiations because when I look at from the years 2011 to 2018, a increase from 100, it was 100,337 in 2011. So that's an increase of $82,800 in, from 2011 to 2018. So like, it's, it's just like an 80% increase. I've, I've heard, I don't know how many times, we're talking to Regional District, we're talking to PUS. If Dawson Creek continues to keep funding it, we're going to keep on paying more and more and more, which over the past nine years, that's what's happened. We just keep paying more and more. So I think if Dawson Creek just says, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna not fund anymore, and maybe that'll give us a push from the Regional District and from the Village of Puscoopy to help fund the program that we run for them.
Thank you. Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, I don't know, I just sat here listening to the delegation, and it seemed very clear to me that they're overwhelmed down there and that they need some extra staffing, and I think that this increase is going to do that for them. And, I mean, we all know that it would be great if these other communities in the Regional District step forward, but they're not, and we've been asking them to for years. And so either we run our people at the SPCA and our shelter into the ground and then end up, I mean, Wendy's going to end up on sick leave or something because it's so overwhelming down there. Like, I, I get that it's an increase, but I think they would not be asking for this increase unless it was absolutely necessary. So I'm voting against your motion.
Counselor Rogers and then Counselor Jevetkov?
I'd just like to respond to that. Like, this is, this is directing staff to enter into negotiations. With the, with the, with the recommendation, it was that you give them what they want. Like, this is to negotiate, like, maybe there's some wiggle room in there where once staff starts talking to them, okay, we actually can reduce this amount of service here and, and lessen the cost a little bit. I'm just trying to lessen the cost to the taxpayer because when you look at an increase of, of 30%, like, it's, it's like, it's $30,000 more this year. Like, that's supposed to preface a daycare. Like, we get rid of daycare, so what, we can fund more dogs and animal bylaw, by, animal control, sorry? I just look at it, go, there's, gotta be room for negotiations in there, and I don't think that, that the, like, the service is great and everything else, but it's been, it's, I think it's just getting out of control.
Thank you. Counselor Jevetkov?
You know, Wendy gave a pretty comprehensive report. The costs that she talked about, a lot of them are because of us. We're the ones that are passing the bylaws for the betterment of the community. You know, we've got chickens, we've got bees, we've got a cat bylaw, there's all kinds of things that we've added. So I don't see a problem with increasing the contract rate. And she's also pursuing an agreement with PUS and with the Regional District, and we have a member on the Regional District Board. You know, I think those things are coming in time, I hope. But as far as them operating, they're providing an exceptional service where getting a brand-new SPCA building this year, you know, it's time. I mean, we've had a contract for five years, it's time to deal with and increase it based on the bylaws that we've passed in the last, well, for us, three years. So I'll be supporting, or I won't be supporting this motion, but I will make a motion if this one fails.
Counselor Wilber and then Counselor, or, sorry, and then Duncan. Counselor, you're not a counselor yet.
No.
Not yet. Do I switch chairs?
You guys are not switching chairs.
Changed things up here today. Well, ditto to what Counselor Jevetkov just said, but also I think that the recommend, the recommendation that was put forward, and not the one Counselor Rogers has put forward, also allowed for a reasonable increase so that they don't have to keep asking. But I also think by, by giving them the money so that they can provide proper service to the community is healthy for our community, and we've seen great work done on decisions that we've made in the past. But I, what I also think is it also puts us in a position as the municipality to write a letter to each of those other areas saying, this is what we're doing, this is it, so we're at a point now where if you want to have service, you either kick in or we'll just look after our own. So I know the BCSPCA has an obligation to look after animals no matter where they come from, but I think it gives us an ability to give a strong message if we say we're going to increase the service, but this is the index that we're going to use moving forward. So I won't be voting in favor of your motion. Sorry.
Duncan?
So, through your worship, just for clarification, we have worked with the BCSPCA. Originally, this report was slated to be on December 4th, but we didn't have enough information. If we're going to bring forward a recommendation to increase costs, we need to make sure that we've looked at all of the angles and alternatives. The alternative to provide the service, or, sorry, to negotiate a service level at $140,000 essentially does not maintain our service level right now. It decreases whether it's hours of operation or availability or ability to enforce our bylaws. So we have worked, and, and we wouldn't bring forward this recommendation without having those negotiations and discussions.
So I, having had the benefit of being on council 25 years ago, and I think Counselor Jevetkov maybe has that past experience as well, before the SPCA were looking after our animal responsibility bylaw and the animal bylaws, we had a dog pound, and we had city staff operating a dog pound. It was, it was without exception, weekly, we were dealing with complaints from our residents about issues in the community at this council, at the council table at that time, on dog issues and cruelty to animals. And it was crazy how much, and I remember it very vividly about how much. And so that was just work that was going on. We had two, two people as our, part of our bylaw enforcement that were trying to deal with it. We were operating it, and honest goodness, the difference in how we deal and have at council and our community deal with issues today as it relates to animal bylaw is completely different. And not only are we responsible in terms of how the animals are being dealt with and, and the SPCA, and I look at it from this perspective, the SPCA are doing our animal responsibility bylaw as well as the Society for Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, and they do a ton of fundraising, and they do a bunch of stuff in our community, they get a whole bunch of support to be able to do those other things that go on. And if the Village of PUS and the district kick in some dough to help them do some of those things for the rural area, that will benefit our community in the long run because that will help the animal population across the region. And so for me, if we, the, the number of complaints, the number of animals that are out there in the community are not going to be minimized if we don't increase the money. We're just going to be, our staff are going to be dealing with it because the SPCA will have indicated they don't have the capacity to deal with that growth in demand that's coming from aspects around the expectation of service. So I as well, I won't be supporting it. So I as well, I won't be supporting it, the motion.
Counsel Parzol.
Thank you. I have, again, the hat of saying, you know, I, we did improve our bylaw, and I have no clear idea from the presentation of how that bylaw and its components increased the costs to the SPCA. Maybe we need to revisit that bylaw. Once we know, if there is a positive correlation between that bylaw amendments that were made and increased costs, maybe we need to revisit that bylaw. We simply cannot, in my view, entertain $40,000 increases as a percentage is significant. We have passionate staff, I appreciate Wendy and her staff, it's nothing to do with that. That would be a completely different matter, but I just say I don't think we can afford this. And I also really resent dealing with, we've just started our budget deliberations, this sort of ad hoc approach. We've got this one item, how do we know what other things we're going to cut if we're going to have a balanced budget? So I think this is not timely as well. I think we should deal with this in light of all our other budget considerations. We've made some decisions in the past that we may not like, but we did them in the totality of knowing our budget position. This has been made in an ad hoc way, and so that's why I support it. I'd like, the motion, the motion put forward, I'd like to know if we are going to negotiate the correlation between bylaw changes and what impact that had on the costs, and if we still feel that those bylaw changes are affordable in light of our total budget position, that's a different discussion, but I also don't want to approve anything without review of our total budget seen for 2018.
Thank you. Duncan, give the component on timing as Counsel Parzol, as it relates to budget and having, having to have the contract done now.
Sure, so through your worship, the contract expires December 31st?
November 30th, it's already.
So it's already expired.
Okay.
So we're trying to secure that contract as we move into the new year.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Jevetkov.
Just for consistency's sake, we could have had the same discussion around council deliberation, but there wasn't any. So, I, you know, I mean, we've created the cost. For us to go back to the dog pound, if we're paying 140,000 or 180,000 a year to SPCA, that would be, you know, a staff person and a pickup, they wouldn't be able to handle the 500 complaints a year, so then you need more staff. So then you're looking at 300,000 or 400,000. So then, like you say, we don't get any complaints, we're not inundated at every meeting with, you know, so to me, it's a no-brainer.
Thank you. Any further comments, or any further questions on the motion that we direct staff to go back to renegotiate at 140? All those in favor? Opposed? It's defeated. Counsel Schuman.
I would move report number 17-180 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding animal responsibility agreement, SPCA be received, further that the five-year contract with the BCSPCA be approved beginning on December 1st, 2017, and ending on November 30th, 2022, with the first annual payment set at $183,146, with subsequent years increased by the positive percentage change to the B.C. Consumer Price Index.
Second, Counsel McFadden, discussion. Counsel Rogers.
Is there an opportunity here to amend the motion by, by the city sending a letter to the regional district and to the village of Puscoopie and saying that, you know, we want some support, we need some support?
I think if you want to do that as a separate motion and direct me, as I did in the other issues, to direct that, to engage with the other communities and regional district to lobby for supporting, or BCSPCA could do that. I wouldn't want to tie it to this motion because it's, this motion is specifically to the contract and funding.
Okay, so let's.
But we can do it as a separate motion if you like. Sure. Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. And so Counsel Jevetkov, or sorry, Counsel Rogers, Parzol were opposed to the previous motion, and Counsel Parzol opposed to this one. Thank you. And now we're on to, we got through to 7.8 before the break, so we're on to report number 7.9, report 17-197 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the new policy on commemorative plaques. Counsel Schuman.
I move report number 17-197 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the new policy for commemorative plaques be received, further that the policy attached to this report be approved pending the required 30-day review.
Thank you. Second, Counsel McFadden, discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Item 8, bylaws, 8.1. We have report number 17-191 from the Chief Financial Officer regarding the Revenue Anticipation Borrowing Bylaw 4366, 2017. Counsel Rogers.
I'll move that report number 17-198.
One.
What's that?
17.
191.
Oh, sorry, 191, thank you. From the Chief Financial Officer regarding the 2018 Revenue Anticipation Borrowing Bylaw 4366, 2017, be received, further that council give first three readings to Revenue Application Borrowing Bylaw Number 4366, 2017.
Thank you. Second, Counsel Schuman, discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Item 9, Mayor's Business. So I got invited to, I think it's the third or, second or third time I've been invited to the seniors group meet at swimming pool, and we have about half an hour, an hour of just an opportunity to engage in some discussion and conversation, and we talk about a whole bunch of stuff, and we did this time, and very helpful to be able to spend a little bit of time with folks in the community, and I always appreciate the invite, and it was a good half hour, an hour. A week and a half ago, I attended the PWA meeting, the Peace Williston Advisory Committee meeting, and it's a committee that was set up by, for impact, communities impacted by the Williston Reservoir about 15 or 16 or 17 years ago. So Mackenzie, Chatwin, Dawson Creek are in there because of our regional presence, Taylor, Fort St. John, some of the First Nations villages, Kodachi on the west side of Williston Reservoir, Soto and West Moberly have been invited, and a couple of others. And it's just an opportunity for communities to talk and engage with BC Hydro, both the Chair of the Board as well as the President of BC Hydro, senior executive are there, and we get a report from the Board, we get a report from the executive, and communities do updates on different things, and we move the meeting around to different communities around the region and get a chance to interact with the communities. And so this meeting was in Vancouver this time, and the new Chair of the Board, Ken Anderson, gave a bit of an update, that was just before the announcement of Site C, and they were anxiously awaiting that decision. The new President of Hydro was there as well, and so anyway, it was just, it's just a really good forum, and it gives us a connection to Hydro, and in a way that you probably wouldn't get any other way. So I raise, give community updates, and I raised a couple of issues that are important to us in terms of the press, the Peace Region Electrification System, how important that is for us in our region, the DCAT, the Dawson-Chatwin Access Transmission Line, I think, that allowed us access to the power for the LP project was a really good example of how that benefited our community and our region. We talked about, and I raised that, about how important that is for the development of our community and our region to have access to that grid. I also talked about the work that's ongoing on the west side of town right now, the underground installation work that Hydro was taking place, and voiced some comments about the work and how we want to make sure that they get it done, minimizing the impact to business and communities. So anyway, that was Peace Williston Advisory Committee. A week and a, week ago Friday, I got invited by Mayor Bob Simpson from Quinnell, and they organized a meeting in Prince George last week ago Friday night with the Mayor of Prince George, Lynn Hall, and Mackenzie, Vanderhoof, Fraser Lake, Fort St. James, talking about fiber supply, and because Bob Simpson's past relationship as the NDP MLA, I think he's very well connected still to the Premier and having served with him, and so he invited the Premier up to Prince George to have this meeting, and Lynn Hall and I being good friends and old friends from Dawson Creek, Lynn suggested it would be appropriate to invite me to the meeting, at which I did, and I got a, I got an opportunity. We met with the Premier for about an hour and a half at City Hall, and Prince George had a dinner there, and the Premier was very good about explaining he has nobody at Cabinet, in the Cabinet Table from the north or the interior really, other than Jennifer Rice as Secretary of State, I think, from the west coast. And so it was really an opportunity for him to engage with the north and interior mayors to find out what are important issues and what are important to us, and, and so we had a great conversation, and I did my best to use up as much of my time as I could. But anyway, it was a great opportunity to engage with the Premier, talk about what's important, and our hospital, and economic development, transportation, the rail, the different things that are really, you wouldn't get a chance to. And the Premier was engaged, he was commenting about how beneficial it was, and so that was a Friday night meeting that I went down to last week. We hosted and held our second synergy meeting last week with Kathleen in the chamber. We, we called it synergy meeting, it's a meeting we invite the industry folks in and talk about what they have planned for the community in terms of initiatives and projects and work, trying to understand what impact it will have on our community, both in terms of services, as well as hotel accommodation and all those things. We did one in April, and it was, so we knew that the TransCanada Project was coming, the Tower Birch, it was going to be really busy in the summer, which it proved to be, and it was just an opportunity for industry to understand who's got what planned, who's doing what, and what impact that will have on their needs for accommodation in the community. And the industry guys, it was for their benefit more than it is for ours, but it was a really good conversation for us to engage with them and understanding what they had planned. So 2017 was really a big production year for construction, plants, pipelines, and then the development of the natural gas sector took off a little bit more with drilling and completions work. So this time, we wanted to talk again about what their plans were for 2018, and we also included and invited Louisiana Pacific, normally it's driven by that natural gas sector, but we also invited LP. So we had about five, six hours of conversation, we had all the various sectors there, industry represented by Pembina, TransCanada, Spectra, Enbridge, Murphy, and Cana, Ark, Turm, not Turmeline, and LP, and they all give updates on what their plans are for 2018 and in terms of what they got, and so I think 2018 will, probably 50 or 60% of our hotel rooms' capacity will be fully consumed just by kind of that stuff that's going on. So 18 is going to be a very busy year as well, and that was without LP really having a firm kind of understanding of what their stuff is. So that's without all the other things that go on in the community, without understanding some of those other, like the press, the Peace Region Electrification System, if that moves ahead, and all those other construction jobs that go on impacting the community. So it was very good, and the industry guys appreciated us hosting them one more time. We did the sealing of the time capsule while we collected all the items for the time capsule and got them in, and we've got a little bit of work left to do, and then it'll be sealed up and placed in with the old time capsule that we'll keep, and we built a display case, and they'll be proudly displayed for the next 50 years at the Aquatic Center. I'm really looking forward to opening that because I can't wait to see the look on people's face when they see all the cool stuff we put in. I'll be 116 that year, but I figure I've got good genes, so I'm going to be there. Northern Lights College tour with, and a meeting with the University of Northern BC happened on Thursday morning. University of Northern BC are looking at putting an RN Baccalaureate Nursing Program in the Northeast, and it's a different model of what they're proposing, but it's a model that's going to allow for kids in our region to get their RN designation, to become a registered nurse, and we all know that, the more that you train, the more you provide the opportunities local, the more opportunity it is for those kids to stay here and pursue their careers. And so we toured with the University of Northern BC folks on Thursday morning at the college, and they got a chance to see the labs and the facilities that exist at Northern Lights College today that are being used by the Licensed Practical Nurse Program and the other health sciences programs that are delivered at our college. It's unbelievable when you see the facilities that exist at our college for that health sciences and nursing, so really excited about the opportunity to have this move forward, and hopefully we see an RN program for the benefit of all of the South East, North East, Northeast of BC. I attended the South Peace Health Services Society Committee Meeting on Thursday night, and that's the South Peace Health Services Society that we put in place with Puscoopie, Tumler Ridge, Chatwin, Dawson Creek, and the rural areas, and it's a society intended to help build and enhance the health, the recruitment and support of health services and people in our region for the South East, and we've got a Board of Directors, the society's in place, it's operational, and they're working on their business plan right now, and so that's a really, really positive bit of work. And I know I raised this society with the RN, the University of Northern BC folks, and talked about some of the initiatives that we have going on in the region that are helping support and complement the work that Northern Health and the colleges are doing in the delivery of health services, and I know they were really pleasing, pleasantly surprised at seeing that South East Health Services Society in operation. Friday night, I attended an event that was organized by a young lady in Dawson Creek on the Me Too movement, and this is the Me Too about raising the profile and the awareness of sexual assault and sexual abuse in society today, and it was an opportunity for me to go and speak about how important that is for all of us to have the courage to not only support those who are affected or impacted by this, but also, to me, it's got me thinking about how important it is, you know, there's all kinds of initiatives going on, the Musac Campaign about violence against women and children was started by the Prince George Friendship Center, and then the BC Lions were here a number of years ago talking about be more, be more than a bystander, and stick up for those people when you witness or you hear comments made about inappropriate language towards women and girls. And so the Me Too Friday night was reflective to me in terms of how important it is for all of us to raise our voices and talk about how important it is to our family and our sons and our daughters and our grandchildren about, it's not appropriate, and we all need to be vigilant about ensuring that we raise that courage to speak up. Friday, I attended, Thursday night, I attended the CJDC 70th Anniversary of CJDC, and it's crazy to me when you think about that, how the evolution of that business, that entity in our community and our region of how important it was as a, building our community and quality of life of our community, of the radio and TV station. I see one of our esteemed employees here was a valued member of that organization for a number of years, and one of the recognized voices. And you think about the history of CJDC and Wilma Moore starting it, and then the Me Show has taken it on, and the amount of attention that that created in our community of giving us all the first time seeing that TV come on at 6 o'clock at night on Channel 5 for the very first time, and we waited to have that happen, and you'd watch that screenshot all day long waiting for the TV to come on. It's amazing to me how the evolution of the radio station and TV station has helped build our community, and that's why it was a real pleasure to be there and celebrate with the employees and folks from the community on the 70th Anniversary of CJDC. I think I then went to the Seniors Christmas Light Tour at the Seniors Hall, and they did the Christmas Light Tour on Thursday night, and so I wanted to go and, I think they had three buses, Arlene and Linda did from the Senior Society, and touring around town for the seniors, and then they go back to Seniors Hall and have some tea and eggnog, I think. I think. And it was just a real good, real good night. And then finally, we attended South East Dawson Creek Senior Secondary School to recognize and celebrate the accomplishments of the athletic departments of the kids at our high, at our school. And they had a ton of different track teams, soccer, basketball, volleyball, rugby. The rugby haven't celebrated yet, but they got them up there anyway. And then we won a provincial championships with the junior girls' team, and the senior girls' team were right there in the provincial. So I think it just is a really good, good, solid, healthy message about sport and youth. And I loved seeing the high school putting on a special event at the high school and recognizing it. So we were all there as well with council to help demonstrate the significance of how important it was for our community. Fit for mayor. Other than I, too, South East Economic Development, I wanted to list a number of things here that I just wanted to reaffirm, because when we get into Peace River Regional District, I've got about five or six things that I want to bring forward as potential funding partnerships with the South East Economic Development Group, and the Business-to-Business Expo that was driven by Community Futures, the Dawson Creek and District Airport Marketing Initiative, we did that this year in partnership with them. I want to try and see if we can continue that in 18. The South East Health Society, and now that we've got these guys underway, and they've got representation from Chatwin and Tumler and Pooch, we didn't really appreciate the structure that you got. Now you need some help to administrate it. And so I'm going to see if I can get the South East guys to kick in a little bit of funding this year to help them with some core, like computer and some of things like that that they're going to need. I want to keep going on this South East Business Directory and keep that momentum going. It's really been very positive. And actually, when I was at the Peace Wilson Advisory Committee meeting, Nathan Parento, who was the chief counselor for Soto was there, and I got to meet Nathan over the last year or so. And I talked to him about the Business Directory and said, you know what, it's a South East Business Directory, and we'd love to have you guys partner in it with us. And he was all over it. So we're going to expand that even further and hopefully see the West Moberly and Soto be part of that South East Business Directory, because the more that are in there, the benefit to all of us and building community is there. I love Dawson Creek that Shaila brought forward, so we'll make that pitch forward. And I think in 2000, we didn't do one this year, Mayor's Roundtable, but I really liked the idea of in 18, because in 2018, I honestly anticipate that LNG Canada will make their announcement, and we should do, be prepared to do a significant resource roundtable, as we did two years ago. We didn't do one this year. And so I want to put that in front of the South East Economic Development guys and say, let's do a regional resource table with mining and forestry and the natural gas sector. So has anybody got, Shaila?
Well, just on the Love Dawson Creek, and I'm hoping that that can be approached from a more regional aspect of the South East, because then it's all the community. So I would hope there'd be a buy-in from the other communities that are participating.
All of this is, all of this is regional, otherwise there's no benefit to them to be part of it.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear to those listening.
So any questions from anybody on the Mayor's update? Thank you. Diary, Residential Development Committee, anything?
Nothing to update, your worship.
Consent calendar. Move, seconded, Counselor Wilbur. All in favor? Opposed, carry? Strategic priorities?
Nothing to update, your worship.
Question and answer? Media question?
Nobody showed up. Nobody signed up, nobody showed up.
Don't answer them.
Committee of the whole reports, and so 15-1, Duncan?
So through your worship, we'll have to get an update from the RCMP in January.
So we've received his verbal, or his written report, and we'll receive the update in January? Thank you. 15-2, we have a report from the Director of Corporate Administration. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning.
Nice to have you here.
Nice to be here. A few items just to mention in my report. Records management, we're finally moving forward with that. We've included some funding and budget discussions for that for next And kindness meters, I did want to mention that we're, both staff and TransCanada, are looking at having it just once a year for the draw for the two groups to receive the funding instead of every six months. That would just provide a bit more funding for those two groups. And TransCanada's on board with that. So if all of councils in favor of that, I could bring that up for a policy change at the next meeting.
Sure.
If anyone's opposed. I do have another thing to mention. Urban Systems can be here at noon today, if that works better for your council for the workshop.
Absolutely. Yeah, let's get it done.
All right. Good.
Unless somebody has, does anybody have lunch plans that we, if we move that meeting?
Lunch work for everyone?
If we just bring it through, bring it at 1:00 and get it done? Yeah.
So 11:30 lunch and?
Sure.
That will happen. Also, tourism, I'm not sure if anybody's got any questions in regards to tourism. Things are moving along great. Ryan's discussing all the necessary items with the Visage Information Center and Alaska Highway House. Things seem to be moving along very smoothly. And last, but definitely not least, I want to introduce our new Human Resource Manager, John MacArthur. He has been here about one month now, and I can't say how happy staff is to have him that hallway down to his office. It's just, we're wearing the car fare out going back and forth. So welcome, John.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Not sure if you have anything you want to add?
Yes, I do, through your worship, to the counselors, it's a great community. Been here three weeks out of line. Not unpacked yet, but the community has been wonderful, and the businesses in the community have been great to us.
Well, welcome. Nice to have you here. Counselor Parslow?
Do you have a question about the report?
Yep.
To Duncan, we, the corporate officer, who's been responsible for the corporate filing system? I may have been led to believe that no one's been responsible.
That is, this report does make it sound pretty bad. It's actually not as bad as it sounds.
I have nothing but admiration for you and your staff, so I was a little disturbed where I read this.
The problem here is that each department is dealing with their own filing system. So the control isn't there. Each department works well within their own department, and we know that the corporate admin files are secure. And I just want to ensure you of that. But what we're working on with this records management system is to make a corporate-wide system and have all the records available through one staff person. We were looking at a new program. It's all in the beginning stages, so if the budget is approved, we will start to work through it.
Through your worship, there's also been some changes throughout time. We're in a place now where we're receiving a lot more information, say with building permits and development permits that need to be kept long-term, changes in technology and that ability to store that information. And then you're also dealing with recreation, where we have minors and we have waivers that need to be kept until they're 19. And so everybody's managed it independently, and there's been different requirements, but it's bringing it together. The technology's there. I'd say we're a little prehistoric, and we need to catch up a little bit.
So how much is being put forward in the budget to cover off the first four tasks in this hierarchy of things?
I believe that number is 87,000.
And does that involve additional staff?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Thank you, Brenda. 15-3, we have a report from the Chief Financial Officer. Good morning. Adam?
Hello. So I've been well into the budgeting process right now, as we are aware, and it is taking up the majority of my time. But the next piece I'm excited to start working on is the year end, and getting 2017 wrapped up. Not too much has changed in our department beyond that. I reported out last month about the methods or idea of getting an uptick in e-utilogy billings to reduce the amount of mail we send out. So I did a bit of calculations and math here of a scenario of the possibility, not saying anything set in stone by any means, but a scenario of the change to adding a fee for paper billing to reduce costs to the city and give some incentive to people that use the e-service to use it. And so I'm putting that forth, just as a feeler, to see what your thoughts are. We're not the first organization to do this. There's many bills you receive a fee for if you want the paper bill. And I'll leave that one with you.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Schuman?
So just in response to that, I feel a little bit worried that there might be seniors in our community that aren't as, you know, hooked up with email and doing that kind of thing. And I feel like I get that we want to encourage people to go paperless, but I think there will be some people in our community who just aren't, they're not doing the email thing. They're not staying home, like, got a couple of little senior friends, and they don't do the email or the internet thing. And so I would worry that, that in an effort to get people to sign up to this by imposing a charge, that it could, I know $2 is not a lot of money, but I don't know. I don't know how I'd feel about it, actually, if you wanted to know. I think it wouldn't. I don't think we should charge them.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
Well, I would echo Counselor Schuman's concerns as an initial response. I'm just thinking of some people I know. They don't have computers. They don't have high public sector and private sector incomes. They live on their pensions. And they don't have nice pensions like some of us enjoy. They live on their CPP and OAS. So I understand the sentiment, just like you, but I, I often think we know we need to put the lens on of how does this impact the less fortunate in our community who are struggling to stay in their homes sometimes. So I always lean that direction in these issues of adding extra costs to people, to low-income people. So that's just my initial response, Adam.
Thank you. Counselor Jekka?
So rather than charge people, if it costs you $20 to generate a paper copy and mail it to me, when I sign up for electronic, why don't you give me a $20 discount for the first year?
You get a $2. $2. No $2 bucks for him.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? Duncan?
Through your worship, and it's good to point out, Adam and I have talked about this, and I forewarned him that this might be one of the concerns of council, and there's lots of different ways to go about it, whether it's grandfathered, or there's seniors' rates. And really, this is just an initial conversation utilizing the Committee of the whole to gauge council's perception on some of this stuff.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Take advantage of that.
Doing it, but.
Good. Thank you.
Got our thoughts. It's all good.
Thank you. Thanks, Adam. Anything further, council? 15-4, we have a report from the General Manager of Community Services. Good morning. Welcome. Nice to have you here.
I'm bringing my bodyguard today.
Wow, we're scared.
Morning, Bee.
Morning.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
So we're going to go about this one a little differently. I'd ask Bee to come in today, and I'll leave that sort of discussion to the end, but she said if there's any bad comments about the department that you'd back me up. For this, this report, we have energy updates, we have fire updates, and we also have recreation. So if there's anything specific to the report, just a couple of things inside that I wanted to point out. I think if you look at some of the statistical data, some of our highest numbers around the Dolan walking track, which are very impressive, and I think for sure the pool attendance of note, as that staff has worked very hard to keep and to look at new program delivery, and those numbers are significantly up higher than anything we've had since 2012. So that's a good news reflection story. A couple of notes out of COW, STEAM report, I know the worship is waiting very patiently for those. We spoke with Derek and the STEAM people. They're pulling together an aggregate report for all four, because there's two different sort of sides to that. There's the event side and the sports side, and I think it's important that all of those are reviewed and analyzed prior to bringing to council. We do have the final figures in for all of the under-17s, and we just updated AGM reports and financials for the show and shine and the fall fair. So that'll give us a better picture in the end to draw from, so look forward to that in the New Year. I was away for the last meeting, and I wanted to reflect a little bit on the under-17s again. Full reports will be filed again in January. Janet's working very diligently on those financials and getting the bills paid and looking at the outcome. But I wanted to thank, you know, all the people a bit who participated, supported, and most importantly volunteered to make this event bigger and better than 2015. The partnership between both communities was outstanding. I just want to thank a few people on this end, first and foremost, to the council for allowing us to be a little bit bold and host only two years after. But I think we proved again that we did some good homework, and we knew that we could host, and it would come out fine. I wanted to thank the mayor again for, I don't think you missed a single game, and to Counselor Shaila and Cheryl for their in-house spirit, as we called it. To Mr. Richard Powell and his dedicated team of directors and all the volunteers. We're going to recognize those in a volunteer recognition party in the New Year. Horst Aborn and the Fort St. John gang, Lindsay Borke and Ryan McIver for their endless hours of support to complete tasks and deliver in so many ways. And county staff, all the recreation staff who made challenges go away. The host committee and the steering committees are looking to report this out in New Year, along with the STEAM. A topic I think that needs to be chatted a little bit about, and hopefully it's, it's an end of a long chapter for all of us, and that's the opening of the curling rink. Brenda, I double-checked with Brenda, tonight will be full curling back in the Dawson Creek Curling Club, so that's a huge check off the box for a lot of things. I wanted to thank Ryan McIver and Levi, and both of the operations staff for providing ice for our local curlers and guests over the last couple of weeks with the rocks again to be thrown tonight. Took a lot of resources and a lot of time, but, you know, don't overlook not thanking the staff that worked many long hours there. Also want to thanks to Jeff Ginter for his tireless work and the passion for the game. Happy to say it's back. And that goes right back from our ammonia leak to the floor. I think that building will be there for, you know, good long years. Now, the most important thing in why we're here, my friend to the right, we've worked with our union and our senior management team and our wellness team. We think it's important that we send people away with a smile. We're hoping it's still a smile.
She's smiling.
So 35-plus years of dedicated service to the people of Dawson Creek. And so we wanted her to be part of our COW today, because Bee is actually already officially retired as of November 30th, but we didn't want to get her throughout the Christmas spirit without thanking her. Bee, I said, I think I got this right. I told her it was 14 pages long, but we got it down to a paragraph, because you're never supposed to speak longer than the mayor.
That ain't never going to happen.
Okay. And Bee, I think you started as a laborer back in June 2, 1987. We have notes on file of storekeeper back in 89. You also worked reception and switchboard in 2000, and then went into labor side in 2003, eventually made the way up Labor 1, Labor 2, finishing up your career as an equipment operator. Got that all right?
That's right.
That's all right.
There's a few things in between that.
In between? Yeah, we left it out, yeah. Also had opportunity to work with Bee in her role as the President of Also had opportunity to work with Bee in her role as the president of QP Union. I think that's where Bee and I became, you know, very respectful of the roles that we both had to play. Bee was very passionate and caring union leader, who never backed away from a good debate. And also wants decisions, some good, some bad, Bee, that we both had on going either way, and we moved on. So I want to thank Bee for that. Her, her passion for her brothers and sisters was, was equal to none I've ever seen Bee, so thank you for that. And also Bee has now moved on. Officially, she retired November 30th. I say to Bee, it's a magical thing I haven't figured out yet, is that she is looking stronger, more vibrant, and is living her dream, I believe, through her new business called, I get to plug this now.
Yeah.
Selling Young Living?
Yes.
And Bee's new passion for, she's carried on from her, her union and working for the city to her new passion and active in the community. And Bee was also one of the, I believe Bee, you helped us in 2012, you helped us in 2015 and 2017, and Bee was one of our favorite drivers that would love to go into Grand Prairie and pick up the notable hockey people, and she would either turn them into a Vancouver Canucks fan within an hour and 15 minutes, or they were walking from Pous. But Bee is a very well-respected volunteer on our side as well, Bee. So we wanted to bring Bee in front. I don't like anyone to walk away without 30 years of service to, to be recognized in front of her peers, the union, management, and council. So Bee, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
So I wanted, I have to, so I have to say...
We only asked for one quick photo with the mayor and a couple of members of the union.
We will do that. We, obviously, I've known Bee all my life, I think, and her dad and mom, these are community people, and they have been all their life. And so it's a real honor to have Bee here today and knowing that, how many people get 30 years of service in one organization? How many organizations get that today, that you have employees that give 30 years of their life to the organization? So it's a real pleasure to have you here today, Bee. Retirement doesn't suck, it's good.
I just hope that I'd have more time.
But we want to wish you all the very best in your retirement years, and hope that you have many, many years of happy essential living.
Yeah.
In your future. And all the best to you and your mom and dad over the holidays. I saw Dad Thursday night, and he looked good. So pass on our best, and thank you. Thank you. I have a, the coveted mayor's pen.
Oh.
Yeah, you bet. Thanks. Congratulations. Do you want to do it up here?
Sure.
Yeah. Thanks. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, you guys. Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas. Thanks for coming. Merry Christmas.
If there's any questions...
Any questions, Barry?
I don't think I got really retired.
Thanks, Barry. Report fifteen five, report from the General Manager of Development Services. Good morning. Welcome.
Wanted to start today with, there was a question, I think, from the last meeting, from Councilor Parslow, on waste tonnage.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So I had utilities department pull up some, some numbers for us. So what we have in 2017 is an average of 504 kilograms per household per year is what is going to the landfill. So those numbers were derived just from basically taking those tipping, the weights, and then dividing it up amongst all our residential containers, and we come up with an, with a number. So on average, 504 kilograms per household per year. So depends on how many people are in the household, I guess, as far as per person, but I don't know.
I think it was, I'm just looking up that...
I don't know if it's 2.3.
Email that I've been trying to send to you guys. And in your defense, I noticed it was in my outbox, and it's an exclamation mark, so I tried to resend it twice. I must actually show it to you. I don't know why. I got it from Melanie Turcot, so I looked it up. So 1,000 pounds in a ton?
2,000 pounds.
So I'm dealing with metric.
No, I know you are.
Oh, that was my...
I gathered that you were doing that. And I think this thing should be in metric, as it is Canada, but I thought it was in tons for some reason.
But it could be a metric ton.
Okay, how many?
So there's a thousand KGs.
Can I tell them the same thing?
Very close. Or 1.2.
If you guys can sort that out downstairs.
Anyways, it's a lot of garbage, I think. I think it's just a lot of garbage.
I'm not going to...
And recycling will help that.
His string comment was bad enough.
Back to you, Kev.
Yes. Sorry. Little bit of a fog. I'm battling a bit of a cold here today, so. So a couple other things. Really what I wanted to focus on in this one is, and I think of, of interest, was our, our couple of big snow events that we had. Although you'd never know it now after we had two weeks of beautiful weather, but I did include some numbers on the, the snow plowing and the snow removal. And you can see that each one of those events, they were pretty similar. By the time you include the cost of our, our staff, equipment, and hired equipment to do those two cleanups, inclusive of downtowns, removals and everything, were anywhere between 100 and 110, 115,000 dollars each. So just to give you a perspective. But certainly, in those particular instances, did, you know, the crews and the hired equipment did a great job of, of getting everything cleaned up quickly and opened up, and, and we're in good shape, so. Other than that, is there any questions specifically on, on any of the projects I've listed here or any of the information?
Councilor Rogers?
I do on the projects, because the carryover projects, like, we haven't gone over budget, but what is happening is, is we're going over time. Like the one sanitary job that was done by Chandler, like, that's still on our books.
Yeah, so it's, it's complete. There's a few deficiencies, and I've talked to Celtic Holmes about that, and there's relatively small things that need to be finished up, so that needs to be done, but until it is, it needs to stay on the books, yes.
Yeah, but I find that it's just, for me anyways, you know, it just seems that there's more and more and more, like, look at the sidewalks on 17th Street. You thought that that could have been done, because my thinking is, is that's tying up our capital money. You know, we could actually be utilizing that money for this year, but yet we're carrying over that amount.
So I want to, I want to jump in if I can. Can we get it, so that money's allocated, and it's going to be spent. It doesn't carry over.
Well, if it's not completed, it carries over, like, that total amount, like, it was a million dollars, and it wasn't completed in 2017, do we not have to keep that money in our budget for 2018 until that project's finished?
But it's already been allocated in 2017, so it's not part of the new money for 2018, and Adam can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that's, so it doesn't take away from this 2018 capital.
And the only thing that's carrying forward that would be part of that would be if there's minor deficiencies, you would have the 10 or 15% holdback. The rest of the money's gone. It's spent. It's done, right?
I get that, but because we're municipal government, our budgeted amounts that we have for that project until it's completed, like, because they've all been around 30% the last, so I just think there would be, if it was a million-dollar project and we were 30% under, but we have to fund the total budgeted amount, so that would be the $300,000 that we could actually be using, rather than just sitting in the bank, I guess. It's the jumpstart money. You getting it?
I, I think I am getting it, and I think we need to have some clarification through our budget deliberations this year. That's a great point for us to have, how that carry forward impacts, what's been spent, what's allocated, and what's, how that impacts our ability to fund capital for the next year. And we'll do that.
Yeah, because we have the, the water, the, the Bear Mountain Construction did the water, water storage facility. That one is at substantial completion, but I, the amount of money that it costs versus the budgeted amount, I just look at the difference between those numbers, and we could be utilizing that, that money. Because there's lots of, but that's budgeted.
We'll, we'll bring some clarification forward. I'll talk to administration. Duncan?
Yeah, so just for clarification, we're talking about capital surplus after a project's completed. We can include some information on how that's utilized and where that goes in the budget process.
You bet.
We'll use it.
Anything, Councilor Parslow?
So an update to the waste of SADA, the SADA. You may want to write these down, because I seem to be impeded from sending you this PDF document. So first of all, my apologies for raising the issue of tons or tones, because this data is in kilograms. So the, the, these, this is, the solid waste should be lowered to 350 kilograms per person, not per household. So I don't know how we calculate that. I'm not asking you to find that out, Kevin, okay? But they're just giving you, and that, the 75% of the provincial population are to be covered by organic waste disposal restrictions. Thank you.
I still think we're way...
We're in a legal suite.
We're bad.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
We throw out way too much.
Anything further for our Director of Development Services?
Let him run that.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
You look so rich.
Merry Christmas.
What else?
Fifteen six, we have a report from our Airport Manager. Good morning, Patrick.
Good morning, everyone.
So did you notice the 4-0 score this weekend?
Yes, I did. It was a good weekend.
Yeah, it was great.
All right, so I'm just going to go through the report. I'm just going to touch on some things and just give you guys some additional information going through it. So we continue to provide a safe and secure airport for the traveling public, corporate, medevac, and general aviation. So strategic priorities, we were successful in getting the ACAP funded for our plow truck, sweeper, runway condition reporting system, and grader. So the plow truck is estimated to arrive in mid-January. It's going to allow us to have tandem operations at the same time when clearing our runways, so it's going to help with operational efficiency. It'll probably be half of the time having that extra plow truck to clear that runway. So we also got the sweeper. It arrived last Monday, so we'll be able to attach that to the plow truck when we get that, and we'll be able to have two sweepers going at the same time. So we also got the runway condition reporting system. It arrived in late November. Total upgrade from the system we currently have, which is kind of getting phased out. So this was a must, really well-needed upgrade that we got. The grader arrived the first week of December. Haven't had a chance to use it yet, because there hasn't been too much snow lately. However, we're looking forward to the first snowfall to be able to break that baby in. So we also got the terminal canopy project pretty much complete, just undergoing the final touches. Much needed makeover, really changed the front face of our terminal building, so that was really well. Going to the operational strategies, we have four goals as regulated by Transport Canada. We developed one standard operating procedure recently to help with our winter maintenance. So we were trying to, we're trying to increase the safety protocols as well as increasing our operational efficiency. So we developed a standard operating procedure to avoid some of the safety risks that operators might incur. So we haven't had no Canadian Aviation Daily Occurrence Reporting System reported recently, so that's a very good sign that we're headed in the right direction. Training is ongoing, month-to-month basis, so I'm running training on safety-related aspects on the month-to-month basis. Next year, staff will be enrolled in a variety of courses to ensure that we stay ahead of the game going forward. No active area incursions, which is really well. Going to the other information, so CMA is continuously providing their service. They've had two canceled flights over the last two months. Unfortunately, this is out of our control. It was due to heavy fog. They couldn't come in. So that's something that we can't really change too much. However, it's something to look, look forward. We can work with CMA to see if we can do anything better to accommodate for them going forward. Integra Air, of course, has started their service, so they have seen a steady rate of passengers. They're looking to get a better flight load. So we will be working with them in the new year to ensure that this flight, flight service actually develops going forward. However, last week, they've had days where they've had 11 in and 11 out, so they've been hitting their quota in the last couple of weeks, which is really well. So charter aircraft continue to stay busy. SunWest is flying the Encana folks, which has been, some days they even get two flights recently. Last week, they had around three flights, SunWest flights, come in on its own and fully, completely packed. So that was good to see. Medevacs remain to stay busy. This is the time of year where it's busy time for hospitals, and the good news for us as an airport is that we actually average at least one to two per day. On some days, we actually get around four. So that's four lives that we're helping out, so it's good to see. Passenger numbers for the month of October have gone up to last year's slightly, 30 more passengers than the previous years. It's positive trend, so at least it's not going down. Aircraft movements have increased a lot, over 200 more movements since last October, so that's a significant amount. So news and notes, we recently acquired new terminal seating for our airport, which is a great upgrade. We used to have these metal, pretty uncomfortable seats, but now we upgraded to some leather seats that were donated from Grand Prairie Airport as they upgraded theirs. So it was a well-welcome upgrade for us. So we obviously received the grader in our CRS. We also got the sweeper. So phase one of our marketing plan is underway. So we're looking to go forward by building the awareness of the services that the airport provides and where we fly to. We really want to narrow it down to our catchment area. I'm not sure if you guys got that attachment in the report. So as you can see in that catchment area, we, we go all the way out to Fort St. John and all the way out to Grand Prairie, and in that, we have around 60,000 to 100,000 people in there that we can actually target. So going forward, I'm working with Ballantyne Media right now to create our phase one. Going forward, in phase two, what we will do is, it will develop our tourism and attracting people from the south up to the north. So we will do this by flying well-known bloggers out, so they have about a million people following them on their blogs. So they'll write a tourism blog about Dawson Creek, and hopefully that leads us to something productive in the new year. Bringing more people up to the north would be something that, is something much needed. A lot of people from the south, including myself, before I came up here, I didn't know how beautiful this area of land is, and I think it's about time that we got that exposure out there. So we're in the midst of getting ready for the aircraft hanging in the restaurant area. Danny Simmons is donating a plane. He's been a pleasure to work with, and we will be hanging that aircraft in February. This will really give the inside of the terminal a nice facelift and something as an attraction for people to see as well. So ACAP has officially changed their structure, so we do not have a local representative anymore. However, we have a representative... However, we have a representative stationed in Ottawa. I had a meeting on the phone with her last week. She seems pretty busy, so going forward, what we'll need to do is keep that in mind when putting more ACAP projects forward. So we just wrapped up our audit with Transport Canada, got very good feedback. Couple minor things, but they kinda had to find something to kinda justify what they do in a way. But, yeah, all the suggestions they gave us are pretty much take us to the next level going forward, so it was a really good audit that we had by the federal government. So recently, we have received a lot of inquiries of advertising opportunities in the airport. So, going forward, we're in the process right now of finishing up an agreement with ExplorerNet, who is gonna be advertising in our terminal. There are other couple companies that are interested, and we will definitely see a boost of revenue due to this. So winter is underway, and we've been able to keep up with the snow so far. Having a fourth person as well as new equipment will sure cut down the overtime costs as well as fatigue on staff. So, we've been fortunate enough to have a fairly clean December. OT costs will go down significantly this year with that extra person, it actually helps a lot. And you can see in the morale of the team right now that they're healthy and ready to go for the next snowfall, so it's nice to see that. So next year, talking about going forward, I feel as airport manager, it's vital for us to get the youth more involved in aviation. So I'll be working with a number of people to try and get a youth engagement program for aviation started in the local community, just to bring some awareness to the youth and, you know, it's something that is a forgotten industry often, and it's something just to give the youth, you know, a bigger picture of what else is out there. So, some of the key objectives for next year is to obviously create additional streams of revenue, so a lot of inquiries about possibilities of opening up a flight club again, so that's very positive. There's a bunch of other things that I'm working on that hopefully in the next Cow Report, I can update you guys with some new streams of revenue. So obviously, we wanna limit and reduce our current expenditures, so cut down overtime and resources if we can, wherever we can. We're working on that really hard right now. So we wanna really create operational efficiencies with staff. So, we wanna ensure that staff works together with the new equipment to provide a seamless operation. The fourth thing is, we wanna really market the airport to Dawson Creek in our catchment area. It's funny, because a passenger that flies pretty frequently through the airport actually had this one saying to me that really stuck with me. And he said, "It's safer for me to fly to Dawson Creek than Fort St. John." And I was like, "Why?" And he said, he's like, "The Taylor Hill is closed more often than your guys' runway is." And that was the, probably the simplest terms how you could put our airport. So, that was good to hear. So we wanna grow and maintain our current transportation network. We wanna hopefully develop new routes, hopefully attract more airlines, and going forward, hopefully develop more flight times for our current airlines as well. So we'll be working on that next year. So, also touching on that, so Pacific Coastal Airlines just actually joined up with WestJet. So Pacific Coastal Airlines is now serving as a regional service for Westjet. So, that might be something we might wanna pursue going forward as well. So, long-term planning, once we know what direction we wanna head in, I'd like to either include us in our, the city's transportation plan, or we can create our own airport master plan, just to kinda get a direction, have a plan executed going forward. So, seventh thing is, obviously I wanna engage the local youth about aviation and airports. And the eighth thing, might be a difficult task, but I'm up for the challenge. Wanna become a main competitor with Fort St. John and Grand Prairie. So, if you guys have any questions, feel free to shoot away.
Thanks Patrick, Councillor Parzal?
Yes, I enjoy receiving your reports Patrick, it's great. You mentioned the number 11 for Integra, and I've enjoyed that number for the last couple of weeks. Explain a little more, why is that number kinda critical for them?
So, they are looking to approximately get seven in and seven out a day. So hitting 11 is going a little bit above and beyond. So that's why that number is a really good number to hear.
Good. One last question. I include myself in this, a number of people have spoken to me about their, their failure despite of repeated efforts to use their air miles on, with our local carriers. Are they not part of the air mile program? Is that the difficulty?
That's something I wouldn't be able to answer. Yeah. Can find out for you though.
Thank you. Councillor Rogers?
Your, your marketing plan?
Yeah.
You've contacted NDIT for the marketing initiative plan and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then also, I'll, I'll remind the mayor when he's speaking at the high school to talk about the, that's at the end of January by the way. About engaging the youth out of the airport.
Great idea.
Perfect.
Good. Thank you, Councillor Jovacca?
So Pacific Coastal, is that the outfit that flies into Trail?
I believe so, yeah, yeah.
And on the River.
They have a lot of island flights.
Cause Trail is a smaller area than this, I mean, you know, cause Castle Guard's a major airport there, but Trail is a little airstrip down Columbia Gardens that's, doesn't even come close to what we've got here.
Yeah.
And, and you say they're connected somehow with Westjet?
So Westjet bought them out, so now Pacific Coastal is operating under Westjet. So pretty much, Westjet is using Pacific Coastal's fleet for regional services, and I think...
I, I don't, I've heard the comment that we would never, ever get Westjet. Got a number of times.
So, so that's why, like, I, I wanted to say that, just because if we were able to get Pacific Coastal, that would be a good way to kinda step up eventually to get Westjet or a bigger airline.
Interesting.
Yeah, for sure.
Pacific Coastal just announced that through, through Westjet now is providing service to Cranbrook, I think they announced two or three locations that they're just adding as a result of that.
Exactly.
Good, thank you. Any further questions for Patrick? Thank you Patrick, appreciate it. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you guys.
15-7, we have the report from Tourism Dawson Creek, Joyce and April here. Good morning. Before they start, Barry, I, no, no, I'll do it later. That's okay, yeah, go ahead. Thank you, good morning, welcome. Welcome, nice to have you guys here.
Good morning, good morning and Merry Christmas everybody. Doesn't look very Christmasy out there, Mayor Baumstead councillors. I'd like to begin by telling you how much I enjoyed my expanded role with tourism this year, and I wanna thank everybody for their support across the board, it's just been wonderful. I'd also like to acknowledge our great Tourism Dawson Creek team of administration and of course the summer staff. They provided ongoing counseling services and actively participated in our many activities, such as the street counseling program, where we sent our downtown, our staff downtown and out to the RV parks and the campgrounds and to specific key events in the area to engage with our visitors. We also had our mobile visitor, visitor center, I'm sure you saw that cute little trailer that we had wrapped, and it's been out and about at key events and locations this summer. We had our Highway Howdy Welcome Program, which included 18 caravan presentations to welcome 448 RV travelers, as well as our Step Up Coach Welcome to 12 buses that were coming through the area and visiting us. And as you probably know, we developed a signature experience program over the past few years, and we started giving guided downtown walking tours, historic walking tours. And of note, we implemented an admission program to the Alaska Highway House, which generated more than $5,000 this past summer. The marketing aspect of my role was completely new to me as being the manager of visitor services, and I'd like to say a special thank you to April for all her help and guidance, ensuring that we, that Dawson Creek maintained our marketing programs for the coming year of 2018. And this past year was a banner summer in many ways. Although visitation was down in many other areas of the province due to the critical forest fire situations, ours was actually up due to the 75th anniversary of the Alaska Highway. We'd also like to note that this has been the strongest year ever in retail sales since I've been in, in this position. We were up $7,000 over last year, which is about a 7.5% increase, which we attribute to our, our solid retail program and the anniversary, the 75th anniversary of the highway. Even travel in the shoulder seasons was up a little bit. With the increased media coverage and awareness attributed to Northern BC Tourism and Destination BC Programs, we're confident that travel along the Alaska Highway will continue to remain strong. The 75th anniversary of the Alaska Highway Celebration that we had downtown on July 20th was one of my personal favorite highlights of the year. We had, if, in case you don't remember, we had 10th Street blocked off in front of the Alaska Highway House to welcome the Western Command Military Vehicle Historist, Historical Society Convoy. I'd like to thank everyone who spoke about the community, our history and the connection to the highway, in particular you Mayor Baumstead, MLA Mike Bernier, who between them wove an emotional story about the impact of the construction of our, the impact, the construction of our highway had on our community and the people who live here. We had the Dawson Creek and Pouskupi Legions Honor Guards attend, as well as the Dawson Creek Choral Society singing both Canadian and United States of America anthems. Mayor Baumstead accepted the Congressional Gold Medal from John Hall on behalf of the First Special Service Force. And of special importance to me was the attendance of a dozen or so US military veterans who I had just happened to meet at one of my caravan presentations the night before, and I asked them to come and stand for their country at our celebration. And it was really heartwarming in that these veterans, they were on holidays, they weren't expecting anything fancy, so they were only had their holiday clothing, but they managed to show up with Army written down their shirts and Marines on their, on their cap, so it was really, really quite special. The invitation that we had, I heard from many of the people that were traveling with them absolutely made their summer and made their, made their holiday, and in turn, we've got these new ambassadors for Dawson Creek that live south of the border. In keeping with the direction of our stakeholders, we continue to engage the community as identified in the revision of the community plan, which was supported by council, and we've worked to improve our stakeholder outreach. We generated awareness in tourism with the Be Your, Be a Tourist in Your Own Town Month, and as aside, we'd like to thank the councillors who supported and participated the councillor-to-councillor Day at the visitor center in June. We improved our sharing of information by producing and distributing a monthly events flat sheet to all our hoteliers and stakeholders. Most recently, we partnered with Sustainable Dawson Creek, Love Dawson Creek, and the Chamber of Commerce to produce the Holiday Handbook Project, of which I noticed you have a stack of them on your front desk there. And we distributed, altogether distributed 2,000 of those handbooks to all, again, all the hoteliers and many of the local stakeholders, as well as passing them out at the Oilman's Christmas Tree Lightup in November. We also worked to bring the tourism perspective to local organizations by attending board meetings in the community. Another great experience this year was working with Barry, Shontay, and Lindsay on the Sports Tourism Assessment Model, also known as the STEAM model, which Barry talked about earlier, and where we collected data on the economic impact of select events in the city. For such an important project, I have to say it was a real fun one to pull off, because we had a chance, chance to send out our troops to engage with thousands of visitors and locals at the events, and I know from feedback that everybody had a great time doing that. So, now it's December, and a new chapter is opening for tourism in Dawson Creek, as well as for Tourism Dawson Creek. As you can well imagine, we've been working feverishly with Ryan and the new management team to wrap up projects and to clear the decks for 2018. One of those projects is the New Visitor and Community Guide, which is hot off the press and arrived on Friday, late Friday afternoon. We have 30,000 copies in the Alaska Highway House, and we'll be distributing them in the new year, and they're right here, you're the first ones, I brought everybody a copy, and it really is beautiful. I wanna thank, thank you Mayor Baumstead and Brenda for your guidance and input in the guide, I think you're gonna really like it. And once again, in regards to the transition coming up, if you, as you might have heard, my husband and I are leaving the community in the spring and moving to Vancouver Island, but I've...
Crazy talk, crazy talk.
I've entered into a contract with Ryan that I will be providing, I'll be transferring the knowledge, so I'll be working with the new management company to recruit and train our, our new manager visitor services, and I'll have, we'll make sure that everything's in place for the 2018 visitor, visitor season. So I'd like to end by saying that it's been my pleasure to work with Northern BC Tourism over the past seven-plus years, and it has been my pleasure to work for you. My roots are here, and I love this community, thank you.
Thank you, Joyce, thank you. Questions, comments? Councillor Parzal?
Well first of all, I can't say, say how much I appreciate your talent and the way you do things. The way you handled that event this summer was very impressive in my mind.
Thank you.
Can I ask you, just for my understanding, something about the data?
Sure.
So how, it says here, overall parties, right? So, do you, when you collect information at the visitor center, so I arrive there and I'm with my wife or something, you, you asked, how many are in your party, is that what you do? Okay.
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
So Destination British Columbia has a standardized, thank you, thank you very much. Destination British Columbia has a standardized statistic gathering spreadsheet that every visitor center that's in the network uses to collect, collect data and statistics. So when you do come in, Councillor Parzal, and you've got your family of, say, four, you come in as one party. So on this sheet, we check off, we just do the simple little, you know, the four sticks and then a slice for five, and that's, it's as basic as that, but that's just so effective. So we will count you, we'll put a tick in the party that you've come in as a party, but we'll put a number in there that says you're a party of four, or you're a party of three. So in the end, at the end of the day, we collect the statistics for how many parties and how many people, and we only get that number by a direct question. We don't guess anything, we just, we just report what's...
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Councillor Wilber?
Well I don't have a question, but I just wanna thank Joyce. It's been a pleasure to work with her, she loves Dawson Creek and planning for people, and our, our morning greetings for Dawson Creek will not be the same without you. And so Joyce is our yee-haw of the yee-haw, so we're gonna miss you, but I wanna thank you for your dedication and devotion to our community, and it has been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you very much.
So, obviously it's, it's a cool time in one's life when we're transitioning and making this new move, but we all love our community, we all love the people in our community, and that's what it is, it's about the people. And you've been such a great advocate and a great supporter and a great citizen, that we're so happy for you on one hand, and so sad to see you leave, but we wanna wish you the very, very best, and I think July, whatever that day was, was a special day for us as well. It was a very, very cool event, and I think back on that and how, like you say, the look on the people that were there and how would it impact, and so those are the foot soldiers for Dawson Creek now that are out there advocating for us, so thanks so much to and for everything, and we wanna wish you and your husband all the very best, and we know you'll be back, cause that's just crazy talk, moving to the island.
Right now I have a foot, a foot and two canoes.
So anyway, Merry Christmas, all the best. April, so good to see you again, have a Merry Christmas and all the best, and we'll see you in 2018. Thank you. Thank you.
Where would you like me to leave these?
Right there.
There's good, we're good. I just, while Barry was speaking about U-17, I just wanted to give a real quick little thing, cause I got a, a text message yesterday from a gentleman on account, there it is. And it was Mr. Dregel, and he just wanted to pass on a very best wishes to you and your bride, Mr. Mayor, and for Christmas in the year, hope it's a special one. Please extend my very best to your council as well. I'm off to the World Juniors and the Olympics and then retire in November, but I wanna let you know how much we appreciate the interaction with the city, and so I wanted to pass on our best wishes to council, so, and I forgot to do that while Barry was speaking. So we now recess to close, and a resolution to move into closed. Moved by McFadden, Councillor Wilber, all in favor, opposed, carried, thank you. Thank you everybody, Merry Christmas.